Called order at six oh three. Thank you, everyone. And moving right along, meetings, we have a February third meeting minutes if anyone has a chance to look at them. I was not there, so. I'm standing.
I didn't get any comments from anybody, so. Please that I saw.
Does anyone feel like making a motion or do you want to put it off until the next meeting?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes is submitted.
Anyone second?
I'll second.
Yeah, these are the February, February third meeting minutes.
Correct.
Last time we met.
Okay, and we'll do a roll call and Frank.
Hi.
Okay, I do not see Lisa yet, Brendan yet, and is Todd on yet? No. Okay, Geetha?
Yeah.
Okay. John?
Yes.
Colleen?
Yes.
Mark?
Hi.
Don?
Yes.
And last would be Emily, I don't, is Emily on yet? No, okay. Alright, so that's all set.
Yeah, I mean, yes, it's as well, it's Brendan.
Yeah, thank you, Brendan. I put you for a second, okay?
Oh, thank you.
Alright. New Lynch FFNE package, so Andy, you're gonna take it?
Yep.
Quick.
Yes. Frank or Andrew, can you give me permission to share my screen?
It should work.
Okay. Awesome. So since the last meeting on January thirteen, we had Doug from Athens. He was presenting the LCN, the infrastructure package. And so I think that on that day, the EFTBC voted and approved four hundred and forty-six thousand, four hundred and sixty-nine dollar eighty-eight cent for LCN for the infrastructure. So today, tonight, I have three packages that came in and they're all under budget. I just want to, after this presentation, we can get approval. So that way we can release the, the three packages for fabrication and get, get them to the school. So the first package is the voice over IP hardware, so that's the telephone, that's through Valley Communication for a hundred and seven thousand, two hundred and nineteen dollar twenty-five cent. And our original budget that was estimated by our technology consultant was for a hundred and ten thousand dollar. So this, this price came in about three thousand dollar under the budget. And that, what is included in that, that package is, they, we have three admin telephone, sixteen admin desk phones, and then sixty-five teacher phones, and then six wall phones. So the package is for a total of a hundred and seven thousand, two hundred and nineteen dollar twenty-five cent. And then we also have the, the, the flat panels, the TV, the portable and the mount. So the, the package for that is, we have CCS that submitted the quote for three hundred and forty thousand, eight hundred and forty-five dollar. And our estimated budget for that from our consultant was three hundred and fifty-four thousand, eight hundred. So we're like about fourteen thousand dollar under, and that's including, what is in the packages? We got sixty-two flat panels, the wall mounted one, and then four of the portable, and then the setup for those sixty-six panels are included in that three hundred and forty thousand, eight hundred and forty-five dollar. So what are, what are the remaining to be purchased out of our budget? So we still have like some Chromebook, some docking station, and also some printer, as you can see, so we have, we have like an estimate amount remaining of four hundred and forty-three thousand, nine hundred and sixty-four dollars, seventy, seventy cent. That those, these are the remaining items to be purchased. And I think Andrew is working on the getting quote and pricing, so, you know, in the next couple of months. Once we get the pricing, I'll, you know, present them to the EFTBC. Another item tonight that we have the pricing back is the POS equipment. This is the, the cashier for the kitchen. So our estimated was seven thousand dollar, the price came in at six thousand and six dollar. And then we, we still have some remaining miscellaneous items such as the, the licenses, some toner for printer, and then all some connection liftgate services. So these are being purchased at a later time. So with those three items, I just want to quickly review where we are with the budget. So we start off with the budget during schematic design of one point five million dollars. So as I mentioned earlier, the LCN package that was approved on January thirteen was for four hundred and forty-six thousand, four hundred and sixty-nine and eighty-eight cent. For tonight, for Valley Communication, for the voice over IP phone, for a hundred and seven thousand, two hundred and nineteen dollar twenty-five cent. CCS quote for the visual display for three hundred and forty thousand dollar, eight hundred and forty-five. And then the POS equipment for six thousand, six hundred and six dollar. So these are the four, you know, that we got pricing already. So the remainder, as I mentioned earlier, the technology equipment, four hundred and forty-three thousand, nine hundred and sixty-four and seventy-four cent. And the miscellaneous item, the one thousand, four hundred and seventy-four. Also, we carry like a twenty thousand dollar budget for training and closeout. So with that, you know, we're, we are at right now of one million, three hundred and sixty-six thousand, five hundred and seventy-eight dollars. So we're about a hundred and thirty-five thousand dollar under the budget. So that's where we are right now. Any question on the technology?
Just one clarification, Andy, we did buy, and it was small money, but we did buy one Chromebook, and we did buy the one charging unit, just so Andy could see, Andrew could see if they liked it, but, and so that came out of this budget. I don't remember the numbers, but again, they were very, pretty small.
Yeah, it's, it's, it is coming out of this four hundred and forty-six.
Oh, okay, good, okay.
Andy, I have, I have a question, and I, I'm actually gonna direct it, I think, to Andrew. So. My understanding is, let's say if this was not a new build, we could roll in the cost of some of this back end, like POS equipment into our food services contract with Whitson's. I may be off base on that. Is that the case? Would this be an eligible expense? Would this be an eligible expense with Whitson's? And because we're doing it this way, is there any, is there any work that needs to be done, just looking at the food services contract in terms of allowances that are being made to the school committee on equipment?
The, the district buys the point-of-sale equipment, you know, buy it through our food service company, what since it's, we can use those funds, but it's a separate procurement.
Okay. Thank you. And then Andy, you're, so you're not necessarily looking for action on any of these, like, this moment, but the, these would be, we'd take these up under the manager's letter. These would be spending authorizations, is that right? Correct, yes. Okay, and when you're looking for, Meg, are we looking for three separate spending authorizations for the voice over IP hardware install, the flat panel displays and installation, and then the POS equipment?
Yeah, and we have one more that Andrew will talk about.
And then my only other question, which Colleen is probably would ask if I didn't beat her to it. In terms of flat panel displays and installation, any, is there any instructional work? Alright, I'm gonna call it commissioning. Do we, do we own any sort of instructional time about how to operate these displays? Or do we presume staff know how to use them? And if, if we do own any kind of instructional time, is that gonna be recorded? I think Colleen made that suggestion before, it's a good one. So this, this package, the, the one for the this one CCS, we, we have some training in there for three hundred and forty thousand dollar, there's training included in there. So this, this is anything that, you know, that we've missed, the training here and the closeout, anything that we miss at the end. You know, like they, they do carry anything, you know, like a budget of twenty thousand dollar in case like the, we need some miscellaneous equipment or something for training, yeah. But this, this amount included training for the flat panel and also the voice over phone, usually by Valley Communication on other project, they usually come out and train at the end of the project.
Andy?
Thank you.
On some projects, Andy, we have a how to use your classroom user guide for the teachers in terms of some of the controls in the room. I can forward a kind of a sample of that, that might be something that's already in the works, but sometimes it's nice to just have something that's in the room for subs and things like that.
Okay.
So we're gonna pick that up with the letters, no more questions. I guess we'll get right into payments then.
Yes.
I had one spending authorization for some IT work that I wanted Andrew to go over.
Okay. Alright, one second. We had a request from the town, IT is part of the project, project to review the fiber. It wasn't part of the original scope, but the fiber has been changed in how we run it to the school. So I can bring on, I'll show a quick map here. It's like. So we had two lines running to lunch previously. And what we've kind of carved out here is a project to do it, to replace it in two phases. The first phase being sort of part of the scope of this project, Lynch, and we call that phase one. And that runs sort of the upper part of these two fiber lines. And the second part, phase two, we look to work with the town on to implement that. And so there's a main line here, the red line that goes to Vincentown School. And this second line, the blue line, which we run to DW. And that's sort of, that makes a continuous loop with our fiber in town, it kind of adds to the redundancy for also the town side. And so through that, we've been, historically, the town has worked with the fire department to lay fiber, and their resources have been, they don't have as much resources or support to do that, and in the time that we need. And so we've quoted at their recommendation of Hill company called C Contract. Was put this out to phases, I think I have it somewhere here. This is phase one, implement that first part, about eighty-eight thousand, and that second part will be forty-one thousand. And that's the redundant line, so all in, it's a hundred and twenty-nine thousand. So what we're looking for is approval to move forward this phase one, this cost. The lead time on this fiber is about eight weeks, so we're gonna get, get moving soon. So we have the fiber in place as we start to kind of light up those systems and get servers online.
So Jay, is something you're thinking, wait, this presented tonight for information only, and then we, we come back and act on this at the next meeting?
Man, I included it on the manager's letter, I figured, you know, eight, eight to ten weeks out is getting, you know, close. So, but it's up to Jay if you wanna hold off till next meeting, we can.
Well, I mean, if everyone needs more time. We can. It wasn't really something we had, you know, planned to get at tonight, I don't, I don't think, but. Hello, it's, does anyone have questions? Andrew, the, this is the new route too, like Mark brought up, right? This was, there was some, was there a reduction in price from the last one?
No, so I went through that, and that, that wasn't a viable option, and we replaced this line. This is three of the best paths to run it.
Brendan, you have a question?
Yeah, I have a couple of questions for Andrew. Hi, Andrew, I'm Brendan. I, I don't think we've ever met before. Couple of questions. On the first piece of the phase one component, where would that come from in the Lynch budget?
But yeah, Meg's is more contingency spent.
Yeah, I wouldn't have to come out of contingency.
Okay, and then as far as the phase two component of this work goes, I know we have a quote for it. How good is, how long is that quote good for? Are you looking in, and to kind of expand on that question, are you looking for phase two component of this work to be funded through the Lynch project as well?
Yeah, so, so truly, we need to really do this together, I face it up for those budget components. I feel we have both lines going to Lynch previously. So if we could do it all as one project, that'd be ideal, and talking to Mr. Nixon, I think if we, if we can only do phase one of this project, then we would seek some alternative funding, maybe through the town and some new capital reserve funds to move that forward, so we can get all the point at the same time.
Okay, and, and do we have an, an update on contingency at this point, where we can potentially make a decision on this, at least on phase one?
Can I answer that question, mate?
Oh, yeah.
We, we do have a hundred thousand dollar that we carry on this budget for the project for utility fee consumption. And we, so far, we used thirty thousand dollar of that, so we still have about sixty-nine thousand. One of the thirty thousand that we use is the ever-source, some, some ever-source work that was done for the temporary power. So we still have about sixty-nine thousand dollar that we can use for, toward this, and
Okay.
We do need this fiber as soon as possible, because at the end of the project, we need the elevator, and like, you know, testing BMS system and all that stuff, so we need the internet.
Okay, so Andy, not to put you on the spot, but what other exposure do we have in that utility line item budget? Of the contingency and the utility side of things, is there any other exposure where we're gonna potentially be impacted?
As of right now, I don't, I don't see any, I think, I know there is a two thousand dollar change order that Bright wanna use. What I was thinking to judge is against this line here, so we can get reimbursement through the MSBA. Meg, do you, do you think?
I don't see any other, I mean, we're gonna have permanent power, we have all the, I don't see any work orders coming through from the utility, so I think, I, I don't see anything else utility wise coming.
Okay, thank you.
You never know, but.
Sure.
Yeah.
We also have some saving from the, you know, from all the project on, in part of the Lynch project such as like swing space. You know, we, we, we do have some saving here and there on the project, and also with the construction contingency, we still have about five mil, five point nine million dollar construction contingency, and plus another hundred and twenty-six thousand dollar on self-cust contingency. So I, I recommend to fund this out of the utility fee, and then, you know, we, we can, you know, I can talk to Meg if we want to take the saving from the swing space, or we want to take it from construction contingency, we do have some saving there.
So, I don't know if we wanna rush this, Brendan, Brendan, you have another question?
I, I was just, I was just curious to ask Andy, is his recommendation to, to fund phase one and phase two, or just phase one, or again, I'm, I'm, I haven't been involved with this Lynch project for that long, so I, I apologize if I'm not a hundred percent up to speed, but I just wanna get a sense of, i- is phase two absolutely necessary? Or can that, you know, be, be deferred at some, at this point?
Is that, is that the?
Yeah, so it can, it can be deferred. This is one of those items that slipped through the cracks, that should have been addressed during the design phase. So the town and the IT people, the town knew that this line, fiber line went to the Lynch school, and when it was demolished, the line was removed and put in a manhole with the idea that it might be able to be relocate used, but it's so far away physically from the school now that it, it didn't make any sense, and the line was so old that it was falling apart and breaking. So, phase two can happen and should be paid for by the town. It, it, it does offer a level of redundancy, which everybody wants to have, you know, you don't want things going down. But it can certainly be done at a later date, and the IT department plans to go to capital planning and ask for those funds. But it does benefit the school, and it benefits a- all the schools and, and the town, so.
Frank, do you have a question? Because we're gonna, we're running out of time.
You're on mute, Frank.
No, yeah, no, it's gonna answer, I'm sorry, I had it up, I missed.
Alright.
Jay, if, if you're not comfortable voting on this now, I was gonna suggest, and I, I'm happy to, Meg and I, there's a capital meeting actually this week. We, Meg and I could have, we could broach the subject of the second run funding through maybe some capital channels. Certainly could bring that back to the committee, and although we've, you know, we've done this from time to time, if, if it's really quite hot, you know, I'm available next week if we wanted to have a one agenda item meeting, we've done that from time to time, so we don't hold things up. I don't know if others are, but I know we've got to get through the manager's letter, and the public is starting to log on for this joint meeting in six minutes.
Why don't we do that? I don't, I don't wanna rush everyone into this. And we could put out to see if anyone's available for one one item meeting.
Alright, thanks, everyone.
Alright, let's jump onto the manager's letter.
Okay, Andrew, can I share?
Uh, yes.
Okay, everybody see that?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, so payment authorizations, we have an old invoice from TAPay that got missed for ninety-four thousand, three hundred and twelve dollars and seventy cents. We have two months' worth of invoices from Leroy Hill. First is eighty-six thousand, sorry, I gotta make my screen better, eighty-six thousand, nine hundred and seven dollars. The invoice forty-four is for seventy-four thousand, eight hundred and forty-seven dollars and fifty cents. We have the monthly Harbor Cloud for four hundred and thirty-one dollars and sixty cents, the monthly Earth Camp for five hundred and sixty-five dollars, and the monthly, or rather, the first floor of Multivista Photography for one thousand, eight hundred and seventy-four dollars and eighty-two cents. So those are all the payment authorizations, and then there's three spending authorizations that Andrew went, Andy went through. The first three, and we'll just postpone the last item, the contract item.
So Jay, I'm happy to, if you're okay with it, I'm happy to make a motion that we approve the payment authorizations as presented in the manager's letter and by Meg to TAPay, Leroy Hill, Harbor Cloud, Earth Camp, Multi, and Multivista as presented. And in addition, that we approve the three spending authorizations presented tonight to Valley Communications, the voice over. Well, I'm not gonna talk about what it is, we'll say we approved the spending authorizations for Valley Communications, CCS, and Heartland Mosaic for the POS system as presented, and we'll, we'll come back to the fiber at the next available opportunity.
I second that.
Alright, so Don, we'll give it to you today.
Alright, thank you. Peach it, Brendan.
Yeah, you deserve it, Don. All the hard work you've put in over the years, come on.
Frank? Lisa?
Yes.
Brendan?
Yes.
Geetha?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Colleen?
Yes.
Mark?
Hi.
Done, and I, that's it, okay, we're all set with that. Next dates are gonna go back up to that. The tenth, March tenth and the twenty-fourth, and we, we'll, we'll let everyone know if we have to have a, a one of
Midway in there.
Week in between. Alright, so we
We have a couple of minutes left, Jay, I wanted to be sure, we're, we're not gonna adjourn this meeting. I'm gonna make a motion to, to recess, if everybody wants to grab a glass of water or whatever you wanna do in a couple of minutes, but the school committee should be logging on here to join us for our joint meeting to hear the presentation from the UMass Donahue Institute. I see some of those folks have already logged in and joined us. So I think Andrew just threw up the screen, so everybody wants to take a two or three minute break, we'll, we'll just come back and reconvene at six-thirty, we have a hard stop at seven-thirty tonight, and our intention is, once the UMass folks are finished with their presentation, we can open up to some Q and A, and if folks in the gallery wanna submit some questions in writing, they're welcome to do so, and we'll review that with them again in a moment. So motion to recess.
Yes.
I'm moved.
We'll see you back in a couple of minutes. And I turn, be sure you put on mute.
Six thirty one PM and I'll hand it back over um, to uh, Mr. Brendan or Mr. Nixon or, or Mr. Stewart, whoever's next.
Well, let me, let me make a couple of just quick introductory remarks so we can get started Tom. Um, um, you know, the EFPBC is here, um, and we've got, I know Branner's here, I'm, I'm not sure if Jacob's with us tonight, but. Uh, I want to just say a few brief words um, of introduction and explain um, to those watching tonight. On the public side, sort of what this report is about and why it's important. Um, in, in twenty sixteen and twenty seventeen, we last did the school's tenure facilities master plan, that's a responsibility. Uh, one of the responsibilities of the EFPBC and at the conclusion of that plan, it was recommended by the select board. That we get an independent third party evaluation of the enrollment projections. So we brought in uh, UMass Donahue Institute led by Mr. Stewart. Uh, they took a completely different approach, completely different methodology, a fascinating one, if I can say so. Um, and, and actually kind of validated where we were, but it was interesting because it was just such a different approach. Um, their approach, I think compressed a lot of people. Um, and so uh, as the committee will remember, last year, town meeting gave us the funding to get started on an update to the tenure facility master plan, which. In large part helps us build the foundation towards understanding what we need to do for a new Morocco. So part of phase one is the updated enrollment study for Winchester. Um, UMass uh, led by Branner was happy to come back and work with us again, we were thrilled about that. Uh, we entered into contract with them, the EFPBC may remember, we actually I think entered into a contract in September. They got started in October, um, Branner in his introduction will tell you a lot about what they did, but beyond the macro work, which. Uh, is, is interesting in terms of perspective, uh, they did pay visits to Winchester. Then feeding them an awful lot of information. Um, and so they, their report was just uh, released a few days ago. Um, and so we're very pleased that they're here. Um, we will, we also have, I just should say for members of the EFPBC and school committee. We, we made other members of other boards with interest in this presentation aware of this tonight, so I believe we have members of the planning board, finance committee. Uh, housing partnership and so forth, and so when the presentation is done tonight. We certainly want to throw it open to questions from the EFPBC and school committee, but our hope is that with time remaining. Others who are watching tonight will have the opportunity to enter questions through the Q and A. Um, and perhaps uh, Dr. Hackett or Mr. Marin can be the moderator of those and can throw those questions out. Uh, but we're gonna have a hard stop at seven thirty. My last public service announcement is the select board um, um, has a conflict tonight, their meeting actually started four minutes ago. Um, but we have gotten some great written questions and feedback from them as well and we've passed that on to UMass. So if time permits, I might be able to ask some of those questions allowed tonight. Um, so people seem to be appreciative that we have it and they've been reading it and um, I think Jay um, and Tom, we'd just like to. Turn it over to Branner and welcome him and kind of let him do his show.
Yes, please, thank you.
Alright, well, thanks a lot, Chris, um, thank you for that introduction. Uh, and also thank you Winchester for bringing us back after we've completed our last study now in the um, fall of twenty seventeen. So um, Jacob um, Harrington is my colleague, he's been working on this as well. And we're gonna share this presentation. And um, yeah, Chris gave a nice introduction, but we were brought in, in the fall of twenty seventeen. To validate the um, uh, enrollment projection that was done by Flansburgh Associates. Um, during the um, the teens, um, Winchester was experiencing um, quite um, a bit of school enrollment growth. And that precipitated the question of why, why is this happening? And also knowing trying better and with the better understanding of why it's happening. Um, to explain whether we thought the Flansburgh um, projections were on target or not and we came up with. At that time, we thought that they, they were, um, but then um, lo and behold, um, what happens within two years after we release. That report, we hit the pandemic and that kind of heady growth. That the Winchester Public Schools were experiencing, um, like probably just about every other school district in Massachusetts um, went down. And during the um, twenty twenty, twenty two period and then um, it stabilized in Winchester. And now it is starting to go back up again. And with that, that brings us to why we're here today, we're gonna explain. What is going on in Winchester's macro environment, so decisions about um, future facilities changes are not um, being made in a vacuum, so. I'm gonna go over the um, macro environment, which is looking at the jobs, population and demographic trends. Which um, Winchester um, is experiencing, probably not exactly unique to Winchester, but you know, Winchester. Um, does um, have a um, a unique and favorable location. For um, for jobs, which um, also helps to, to push um, enrollment growth. And we compare Winchester to a group of um, peer communities, so you can see how we are performing with towns like Arlington and Belmont. And then um, and then Jacob is gonna do an enrollment analysis, looking at, at future trends. Or current trends and then we're gonna take a look at our future estimates going through. Twenty thirty five, looking at things like building um. The continued momentum of um, demographic change. And, and how the town may look in terms of enrollment in both twenty thirty and twenty thirty five. So next. Now, look, so I'm gonna first talk about the macro environment of Winchester. Um, Win- Winchester has a key advantages in its location, it's high amenity. It has a defined village center, it also has two commuter rail stations going to Boston. And also has a very well-recognized excellent school system, which it's probably had for um, over a hundred years. And so with that, um, it, it's also a fair, fairly affluent community and so it definitely attracts um, peo-. Generally higher income families, people with school age children. And um, and then looking at the pandemic and post-pandemic. We have seen nationwide kind of a switch to high growth. In urban areas, I mean, or, or cities like Boston, New York City, Washington DC, San Francisco. That Seattle, that changed during the pandemic and that made towns like Winchester that much more um, attractive. And so we had with that, people who were like in the cities but wanted space. Start to move to suburban areas and that included Winchester among other um, suburbs of Boston, next slide please. And so we have Winchester's population growth um, had been pretty strong during the twenty teens, it's um, since stabilized. I mean, it's since, it's now a little bit flatter than it had been, but it's slowly resuming growth and like what I was just describing. With Boston, you can see the Bo- Boston with that green line on top, this is an index of growth with all the areas. Um, equalling one in twenty ten and so Boston kind of exploded. Um, Winchester grew and then with the pandemic, Boston went down again, now Boston is actually stabilized and starting to show some growth again. And then um, yeah, during the twenty teens too, Massachusetts had a really, really good decade for population growth. That was the first decade and since like the nineteen fifties or where we actually grew at a similar pace as the United States. So Winchester also was able to benefit from that type of overall growth, but even a little bit more so. Take a second, yeah, and this just demonstrates that right now that Winchester is generally following the um, the Massachusetts trend. And we don't have the twenty twenty four numbers for communities yet, but Massachusetts for twenty twenty to twenty three, even though it did show. A very small decline in population growth, the um, the population has since recovered somewhat. Due to higher levels of both international migration and less um, net outflow of domestic. Um, a net um, outflow of domestic migration. So we are seeing growth again, we'll see if that continues into the future, but at least for right now, the, the signs have been fairly positive. So next slide, please Jacob. Um, so I was just explaining the population, one of the major parts of Winchester's appeal. Is being a place to live while we could, that and being able to commute. To um, cities like Boston, Cambridge, Woburn and Burlington. So while there are about eight thousand people who commute into Winchester. Um, for their jobs and nine hundred eleven people who reside in Winchester, also working in Winchester. I want to point out that about ten thousand five hundred people migrate outside of the town for their work. And what this underscores is that, is that people want to live here even with their jobs that are, that are elsewhere. Because um, it's convenient, as I said before, high amenity. And um, and then also proximate to key job centers. Alright, next slide. And this is looking at where people who live in Winchester work. And this relates to the commuting pattern that I was just describing in the previous slide. Um, a very large number of people who live in Winchester. Are working in professional and business services and professional and business services. Um, is a key sector for the Massachusetts high-tech sector. It includes things like consulting, research and development, computer systems design, marketing, engineering and architecture. These tend to be high-paying, um, highly educated types of jobs and there's a very large group of people with them in Winchester. There's also a large group in finance, which is um, concentrated in Boston. And then there's also um, a large um, group in manufacturing. And so these people who are in manufacturing are not likely to be people who are. You're getting their hands dirty, you know, in, in the traditional manufacturing sense. These are people who are working in the Massachusetts um, tech sector as well, but they're working in the tech sec- the component of the tech sector. That makes things, things like semiconductors, semiconductor manufacturing equipment, robotics, medical equipment. And so a lot of, even though the um, the jobs are characterized as it within manufacturing. Many of these Winchester people are likely people who are managerial or R and D um, related type of work. And but they're going to Massachusetts tech manufacturers. So you put it all together and um, and Wood- and Winchester is um, an appealing place to live. For some of the crucial sectors that drive the Massachusetts and Boston area economy. And um, on the next slide, um, I'll also further um, underline that. Um, this graphic um, indexed to twenty thirteen. Shows um, jobs growth for Winchester's commuting destinations, which is the black dashed line on the top. Um, and it compares that to Massachusetts, which is the yellow line on the bottom and the United States average, which is the blue in the middle. And so um, Massachusetts, we had fairly decent employment growth through the um, the teens and we've resumed growth, even though it's not been. Super strong, the United States has also recovered from the pandemic. But what's interesting is that the jobs growth in Winchester's commuting shed. Whether we're talking about the teens or currently has been higher. And so this represents the jobs growth and the combination of like, of the, of Boston, Cambridge, Burlington. Of Waltham, Woburn and others. So it means that people who are living in Winchester or moving to Winchester are able to capitalize. On good job opportunities um, that are within. Fairly comfortable commuting distance of their home, whether it's Boston, Cambridge and the universities there, or if it's in the one twenty eight belt. Um, they can be reached rather conveniently from Winchester. Excellent, and um, going back to Winchester being um, amenity rich as well as the flow. Of um, people from urban areas during the pandemic is that Winchester is part of this. Kind of Western suburban belt that has a higher proclivity towards remote work. And so again, it shows that Winchester has um, during the pandemic and still today. It's a, a type of a town, along with many of the other Western suburbs. Where people are um, feeling very comfortable to do their remote work. And if they're during their work from home, they're also, you know, bringing their, their kids as well. So again, that's another stimulus. And um, looking at. Demographically, um, Winchester is seen, like this is good because this is looking at census information. For two thousand, twenty ten and twenty twenty, which is the gold standard for data. And what this particular table is showing is, it's showing the um. Growth in the um, school age population, which is five to nineteen, cause that's the way the census breaks it out by age. And then it shows what their share is, that five to nineteen groups share is of the total population. So between two thousand and twenty twenty, it uh, it grew significantly in Chester. And importantly, the share grew from like nineteen point six percent in two thousand to about one quarter in twenty twenty. Um, and that was um, it, it, you see Massachusetts right below. Massachusetts saw a declining share. Um, we hear a lot about like lower fertility in Massachusetts, which means fewer children. So the state really is facing a demographic headwind. But at least so far, um, Winchester as well as our benchmark communities. Which are also similarly type um, generally well-to-do communities with excellent school systems. Are seeing similar type trends for the um, for the most part. Next slide. And then um. With that growth, the number of households per children with Winchester in the left. Um, not surprisingly, has also grown during that same period. A trend that is shared with um, with other, the other benchmark communities as well. So the um, the enrollment growth is being fed by more households that actually, that have children. And then, then we can see it in the data. Next slide. And then um, and then with that, this is a. Long-term school enrollment change. Um, compared to housing units, Winchester saw fairly significant enrollment growth, twenty ten to twenty twenty, but at the same time. Um, housing unit change was really relatively low, which then ties to the next slide. Which is that with household, with the number of housing units not increasing that quickly, but other factors. Um, growing, the average household size in Winchester, it's the, the largest actually right now. Among our benchmark communities um, has been growing and so more, more people are going into a um. And so more more people are going into a um a single unit of housing. And um many of those could be children who are then going on to attend the Winchester schools. Excellent. And um I I I really like this graphic because it really shows a key dynamic for Winchester, which is you have like this, the um young, which is at the top. This this graphic right here is showing the population in rows for zero to twenty-three, with zero being at the top and twenty-three being at the bottom. And so the um preschool ages in yellow, the prime um school-going years is in maroon, and then the post um school is in navy blue at the bottom. So during that pre-kindergarten period, people are you have some people, you know, young kids being born in Winchester, but then you see a clear movement of kids moving in to this town. So at zero, which would be reflective of births, you have about hundred seventy-eight. And then by the age of four, it's risen to two hundred ninety-four. And then during, and then it starts to blossom during the school, um the prime school attending years. And then right as um the Winchester kids graduate from high school, then I'm sure, you know, a very large share go on to college or they go on to work. And thus that nineteen to twenty-three range um in population takes a subsequent decline. So again, this graphic really does show the um the appeal of um Winchester for that um school age population. And um so that's um those are the macro trends. We can field questions concerning them at the end or any others that you may have. But I'm going to turn it over now to Jacob to go over um our enrollment trends as well as our um enrollment estimates looking to twenty thirty and twenty thirty-five.
Hey folks, my name is Jacob Harrington, um and I'm gonna, as Brainer just said, I'm gonna lead you through some um enrollment our enrollment analysis and then some estimates um that we uh put together. So here we can see uh Winchester Public Schools K through twelve um enrollment going back to the two thousand nine, twenty ten school year uh all the way through the most recently available, twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five. So as Brainer uh you know, talked about in the macro section, you can really see that there's that um that over the teens, over that twenty teens decade, you see that kind of consistent growth in in school enrollment, really consistent actually. Then we get to the pandemic years and there's a couple of years of of pretty steep declines, kind of bottoms out. This is is not a trend unique to Winchester and we have a slide on that coming up. And then in the most recent school year, twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five, you see that return to growth, um plus sixty-six students between last year and this and this current school year. Sort of in line actually with the twenty teens in terms of the uh the yearly increase. And here we have it broken out by grade. Um at the top, uh same same years, at the top you see the elementary school level um for the town of Winchester. Really consistent uh consistent over the over the past decade. Um and then you see the declines during that uh the the pandemic years, following pandemic years kind of consistently, you know, in that in that dip and then and then the return to growth at the end. Um it's the high school year, which really over twenty ten to twenty nineteen, you see some pretty consistent growth, uh some pretty rapid growth. Pandemics seem to affect it as well, except instead of a a decline, it seemed more it was a it was a stalling out of growth. Um and then kind of right at the end there, you can kind of see, you put it all together and you get that uh that plus sixty-six from the previous slide. Here we compare Winchester to a number of peer communities um and Massachusetts. So Winchester, so again, this is a uh an index uh to the two thousand nine, twenty ten school year where they're all equal to one. And then you can can, you can see the growth from there. Uh Winchester's the dark line here. And you can see it's it's a it it it's a part of this upward trend along with places like Arlington, Natick, Belmont and so on. Really continue growing over the past decade. Um Massachusetts, on the other hand, from twenty ten to twenty twenty, you know, pretty pretty much no growth. Um it's right at that one point O line, meaning that, you know, where ended the decade, right around where it started in the decade. Pandemic years hit and as you can see, as I alluded to a couple of slides ago, really every community, Winchester, peer communities, um the state overall, they all saw that dip in enrollment. And over those two years and then and then kind of a, you know, a slow return, a slow recovery. The only one that really sticks out here, I think, is Arlington, which um if you uh if you saw on a couple of the slides Brainer showed, um has really kind of demonstrated a lot of growth recently. Uh Brainer, I don't know if you wanted to comment?
Yeah, anecdotally, because we we did get asked about what what is happening in in Arlington. I think it's it's the same dynamic as we have in Winchester, which would be um you probably a housing stock turnover um from older generations to young families that really amped up during the um the teens. And um and then, of course, like you like Jacob said, during the pandemic, their enrollment levels went down, but they've um again resumed some growth. But I I I mean, I would imagine that that growth really is because of general generational changes um in in housing, as well as Arlington also having a um a strong um school district.
Yep. So so some of those trends that I think we're probably all familiar with, just a little bit supercharged in Arlington. Um so with that kind of uh, you know, past look, backwards look, uh here we're going to come to kind of the forward-looking section. With all of the all of this macroeconomic and and enrollment analysis kind of put together, we developed two scenarios to uh try to come up with some estimates for where enrollment could be in twenty thirty, twenty thirty-five. And and the base scenario is what it sounds like. It's a it's a more curtailed version. Uh these are the aspects that you can think maybe um they're on the less certain to more certain, they're maybe on the more certain side um that you could that you could anticipate in the future. Non-development and natural growth, this is kind of the vehicle of demographic change. Kind of what Brainer was even just saying, um you know, turnover in 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 households. You know, folks without kids moving out, young families moving in, um or that that type of thing, uh slowly increasing household average sizes, um you know, small infill projects here and there that, you know, maybe uh aren't on the level of larger apartment buildings, but nevertheless slowly add up and 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 add to uh some consistent, you know, enrollment growth. Uh demolitions, this is that phenomenon of tear downs of maybe uh more modestly sized older homes to be replaced with uh maybe a larger home that has more bedrooms um that uh you know, a new family uh is going to be moving into. Maybe it's the tear down of a single-family home replaced with a duplex, these types of things um that have uh, you know, they there's a a a certain pace of those uh happening in town. Um approved projects, again, uh that's kind of what it sounds like, you know, in terms of the development pipeline in Winchester. These are the ones that uh have that higher level of certainty. They're approved, they're, you know, happening within the next couple of years. Sanctuary, North and West, um there they are two uh larger apartment buildings in town. We modeled the remaining non-leased, uh not yet leased uh rooms, uh the uh units within those to kind of get an idea of um, given how much space is left, what could you maybe anticipate over the next couple of years as those lease up? Um so that's the base scenario. The high scenario, uh in it keep, it has all of those elements and it has a couple of other elements that on that more to less certain you know, uh sliding scale, you maybe these are maybe on the more on the lesser. Uh pending projects would be one of these, so uh in terms of the development pipeline, not as far through, certainly a couple of years out, so the effects of those aren't felt uh right away. Uh there's the Main Street uh Mixed Use District, a rezoning uh within the town of Winchester that recent rezoning, so again, not going to be affecting enrollments in the next couple of years. But you could see some projects coming down the pipeline after that, that uh you could attribute to the rezoning of that uh of that kind of area. Um accessory dwelling units is another one we have here, uh ADUs as they're called. It's um, you know, thi- this is an in-law suite, a basement apartment, um in apartment above a barrage, something like that. Slow, you know, gentle density, it's been kind of described as of, you know, these get introduced in neighborhoods, but um but you know, it kind of works with the, you know, the the neighborhood as it is and and it's here and there little uh uh units being added. Down here, um we have this not included in the enrollment estimates, uh is the MBTA Communities Act. So uh this is uh, I'm sure most people are aware, this is a region-wide uh rezoning initiative to encourage higher densities near public transportation, hence the MBTA Communities Act. This we decided not to include and it is one of a few choices we made to come up with a more conservative approach. Um one reason is that it's rezoning, so um there could be some overlap with the Main Street Mixed Use District. And and without more information, you wouldn't necessarily want to include both of them. Um there could be projects that could kind of fall under either one or the other. Um and the other reason is that, you know, it's a it's a rezoning initiative for the whole region. It's not a building mandate. So there's no numbers of units that have to be built with the MBT Communities Act. So there's still that, it's still relatively new. There's that level of uncertainty. Maybe that's on the most uncertain in in that scale, so we didn't want to include it here. And and here we have kind of put all those together and we get our two scenarios, high scenario and base scenario. To the left of of this of this line, the unshaded section, that's what we've been looking at. That's the uh enrollment data from the two thousand nine, twenty ten school year, all the way through to the current. And then to the right, the shaded area, the these are the projections. These are uh all those factors we just talked about. Put them together and and this is kind of what 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 those look like and what the effect of those could be. Um so off the bat, I would say, um you know, we had that twenty teens era of growth. We had the pandemic uh decline and then kind of uh bottomed out. And then we have that return to growth and 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 potentially it's a return to the twenty teens phenomenon of enrollment growth, you know, by the by the twenty thirty time timeframe. The high scenario gets you to a little bit above the two thousand nineteen peak, where this the base scenario is a little bit below. And then by twenty thirty-five school year, uh the high scenario is at forty-seven, so a a bit above where the twenty nineteen was. Uh whereas the base scenario is kind of just in line with twenty nineteen. So it it, you know, it's a it's a recovery. It's part of the recovery of the pandemic, which, the effects of which lasted after the pandemic, of course, and we're kind of still recovering in a lot of ways. Um and and um a- a- and you can kind of think of it like that. Think of it like error bars also, is these are a range of values that you could think about. And and also note, the last thing I'll say about these, the twenty thirty-one after twenty thirty, twenty thirty-one through twenty twenty, twenty thirty-five, you'll notice that it increases a little bit slower. This is another decision we made to uh have the rate of increase after twenty thirty. Um Brainer's gonna talk a little bit more about this, but you know, five plus years in the future, there's a lot of uncertainty to think about. So you want to be a little more careful when you're kind of coming up with numbers that for in the future. Uh last slide, last slide I'll go through before giving it back to Brainer. Um we took those uh additional enrollment uh through twenty thirty and we proportioned them out to K through five, middle school and high school. Um this is just kind of an idea of of what the base scenario and what the high scenario would mean for each of those grade levels, each of those uh school levels uh in uh for Winchester. Um so with that, I'm going to hand it back to Brainer.
Oh, I'll repeat. Thanks a lot, Jacob. I was muted. Yeah, so with the um projections that we showed through twenty thirty-five, I just want to um, you know, emphasize that they are, you know, they are projections. And so there's there's not really certainty, absolute certainty behind them as with um any projection. Um economic cycles um can go up or down. Winchester has benefited from having a good jobs growth within relatively short commuting distances. There's no guarantee of that in the future. That's part of its appeal. So that would be one, yeah, caveat is like, will the existing economic conditions remain the same or will they change? And we know over time, just looking at Greater Boston and Massachusetts, is that we have periods of strong growth, like in the um in the eighties, followed by a recession and where Massachusetts got really badly hit and with the um collapse of the mini-computer industry um in eighty-nine and ninety, and we've um resumed growth decently in the nineties, then got hit by the dot-com bust. And then we had relatively low growth in two thousands and then um then the Great Recession happened. And then we grew again, then we had the pandemic. So basically what I'm saying is that there are all sorts of cycles, some economic and some that you can't foresee at all, like a pandemic. And and for that, those reasons, we did ratchet down the um the growth in enrollment and the more further out years of the um of the um forecast horizon because of that. And then there are other things too, like, yeah, we have um, yeah, identified Winchester as an appealing community and that's part of the reason what drives its enrollment growth. And and as Jacob mentioned too, we do not incorporate the MBT Communities Act, which is and, you know, will be market-driven, meaning that it has to be economical to be able to build homes um and to be get and to get some sort of return on it. But um if there is, um you know, Winchester would be kind of appealing and that could also um, you know, on the on the positive side, increase um enrollment growth. So there's a lot of things that need to be considered looking at the next ten years. But our goal with the um current work is to help you um expand your toolkit and um to help you um make um better informed decisions about the directions that Winchester may go over next year, ten years and and why. And so um thanks, everyone, and Jacob and I are happy to field questions.
Thank you, Brainer. Jay, um what I thought we might do, since it's a joint meeting, if it's okay with you, if we kind of uh go back and forth between the the two committees, if if folks had questions. And particularly, we have a couple of school committee members calling in. If it's okay, if you, if if Tom, if you want to call on any school committee member, if that's okay with you, Jay, we could kind of throw it over, ask, let's take a school committee question and then EFPPC and back and forth, back and forth and see where we start running out of questions. Um and hopefully with some time left, we might be able to take some questions from others in the audience through the Q and A.
I'd ask uh if school committee members could raise their hand, or EFPPC members, I'm sure Jay would appreciate that too, or if you're in transit and just need to yell it out. And while we wait for hands, um uh thank you uh Brainer and Jacob. Uh this is very, very helpful um, you know, work that you've put together. Uh I did want to just sort of emphasize uh a number of the charts since you're indexing to one, even if the line is going down, as long as the line is above the one, we're still seeing growth, just less growth. So I noticed, I don't think I saw any lines that were below the one. So um, yeah, I thought that was um, that was quite striking. And oddly, I'm not seeing any questions from the school committee at this time. And you're on mute, Jay.
Jay, you're on mute.
Uh Chris, do you have access to anyone else calling in? You want to bring any up any questions or?
Well, I think what we should do, let if we can ask if EFPPC members have questions, they can, I like Tom's idea, they they could raise their hand. Um and while we're giving them that opportunity, um uh uh I will say, because that this was a question that I got in writing um from those who've seen the report, there there absolutely was a question about what what's the difference between an approved project versus a pending project? Um so I'm I'm happy to share with you guys some examples of that. So approved projects, and we're not talking about things like sanctuary, so River Street and Cambridge Street, although they're still leasing up, they're done. I mean, the power's on, people have moved in. So um we consider those built projects where we're simply sort of filling those up with families and kids. So um, we consider those built projects where we're simply sort of filling those up with families and kids. So approved projects that, that UMass looked at included projects like seven thirty-five Main Street, six fifty-four Main Street, six fifty-four has thirty-eight units between one bedrooms, two bedrooms and threes. It includes eighty-seven through eighty-nine Cross Street. Ironically, I think when the UMass team started in the fall, the house was still standing, but while they were doing their work, uh, Mario took the house down. So there's absolutely progress going on um, over in my corner of Winchester and those who live in that area. Um, and of course, it includes Waterfield. Pending projects are, are projects that we, we have, you know, great confidence are going to happen, but less sure about when and less confident about what the scope of the project will be. So Washington and Swanton comes to mind. In fact, I think that's on the select board's agenda tonight. That's a project, as you all know, there was an imminent domain taking of the project. That is expected to be um, multi-use, there'd be some retail, but there will be housing. Our understanding, our understanding is sixty units at Washington and Swanton, but that's going to still require a developer to come on board and make that happen. And then ten Converse, it's another example of a project that's been approved by a couple of bodies in Winchester, not approved by another uh, and is somewhat in limbo, but if that should go forward, that's forty-three units. So I wanted to maybe just offer that um, as a bit of explanation. Yeah, so I don't know, Tom, do you have any questions on, uh, as a committee member?
Well, I've, I've, I've looked through the, the material and, and, and shared a bunch and it looks like they're mostly addressed in the slides. I would emphasize, um, you know, that, yeah, I, I thought it, you, you guys did a wonderful job, you know, um, really tracking the increase in, in uh, you know, the, the number of units as well as the increase in, in uh, capacity and within the units, you know, that, that both of those things are going up. And there was a slide that you had that um, I think, um, I think Jacob uh, maybe had, had gone over that, that showed um, how the, it was about the uh, families with school age children and how it had increased from two thousand to twenty-ten to twenty-twenty. And what I, I, I found that very interesting directionally. But the other thing I found particularly interesting about that slide was the fact that we were, you know, if not number one, we, we were maybe second to Lexington, I think, on, on one of those. But, but so the, the rate of growth not only is accelerating over the decades, but it, it's accelerating, you're, it's at a higher um, rate than we see even in our peer communities. Which is, you know, not surprising for people who live here because it's, it's seven miles to Boston and you know, I think it's nineteen minutes on the commuter rail. So um, for all the reasons that you stated, it, you know, if you want to live in a bedroom community that's really close to Boston to your job, or if you're Cambridge or where, or, or as you say, Wall fam or the tech superhighway, you know, that, it makes a lot of sense, but I thought I'd draw that out. Um, and then just on a fun note, Brainer, I, I appreciate how you uh, benchmarked the decades to uh, uh, the different uh, tech eras, so I, I appreciate that as well. But uh, but no, I don't have uh, questions, you guys addressed them all in the slides, so thank you.
Jay, one, um, another question that we, we've received sort of by, by writing from a couple of members of the select board today had to do with demolitions and, and um, I, I'll do my best to address it and I think I forwarded those questions to Brainer and Jacob earlier today. Maybe they can throw some color on it as well. Certainly, I, I want to underscore that one of the key areas of activity around demolitions involves taking down the smaller home and actually building the two families. So we've seen a lot of that in precinct one and two, Morocco and Lynch District. For instance, the three-bedroom Cape gets taken down and now we have a two-family and there's four bedrooms on each side. So we go from three bedrooms to eight. There is a, um, and it, it appropriately sort of not in the presentation tonight because it'd be a little hard to read, but in the report and, and I believe Brainer and Jacob, you guys have included this right on your, your back appendix. This is a really helpful map, it was originally prepared by Beth Rudolph, back when she was our town engineer for uh, UMass's work back in twenty-seventeen. And our new town engineer, Matt Schuman, has helpfully updated it. This is a map that shows new construction resulting from demolition from the year two thousand through September of twenty-twenty-four. And we track here on the left, the number of buildings. I think it's fascinating just to kind of see where this activity is, sort of as a, as a model of density over the years. And I think for those, those of us who live in Winchester, we don't even need to get in the car and drive by. We can see where these are happening on the map and we can imagine in our mind's eye, is this a demolition of a three or four bedroom home to build a single family, five or six? Or is this going down and now we've got multifamily uh, housing in Winchester? It, it was eye-opening to me um, as well through this process. Want to give a shout out to Dan McGirl, who's our town assessor. Dan keeps a very um, sort of close tab on um, not just the number of housing units in Winchester, but the nature of them. So single-family home, two-family, three-family. We do have four-family units in Winchester, I think I can count them on just two hands, but we have them. And, and through his um, his sort of data collection and what he shared with us when we actually first applied to the MSBA for both Lynch and Morocco and through the updates today. What I think is so interesting is that the MSBA works with communities with an initial, I'll call it disposition, which is they assume communities like Winchester have approximately point five students per housing unit. We have not had that in Winchester for I think twenty years, we're actually above that. And, and we were going sharply above that until COVID hit. When COVID hit, yes, we saw the enrollment drop, but housing construction that was underway didn't stop, it kept going. So there was that moment where the, the ratio looks a little skewed, right? So our students per housing unit dropped sharply, that's only because we lost some kids and we were adding housing units. But just like a rubber band, it has snapped back and now that number is shooting back up again. And, and what we've heard from the MSBA is that makes us somewhat unique. In, in part with the help of um, one of Brainer's colleagues at, at, at UMass, Susan Straight. When we were in eligibility for Lynch, we were able to look at some of the MSBA data, we realized they had bad numbers for students per housing unit in Winchester and used actually some of the reporting from Brainer and his team, brought it to the MSBA. We were able to press pause on the process on Lynch and they ultimately agreed to um, help support a larger school because of that. So it just sort of speaks to the value of processes like this. I'm not trying to make Brainer and Jacob blush, but I mean, it, we have a reputation in Win- Winchester for being very planful and thoughtful, saying what we mean and being able to back it up. So I, I, it, it has really paid us dividends certainly in the past and the hope is that will continue to be the case when we sort of move forward with um, with the new Morocco. I, I want to ask May, Jay, if um, if, if it's okay, I, Frank and Andrew, I think are monitoring um, the Q and A. So if, if there are, if there are members of the audience who have questions, I do think we have one that came in. Can we ask, you know, um, Jay or Andrew to maybe kind of share that question and, and we do our best to react to it?
Yeah, yeah. Someone wants to bring it up?
Jay, you want me to share it?
Sure.
Yeah.
I think I have to read it, I don't know, I'm sure if I can show it, but uh, the question. Not sure the name here, it was for their iPhone. This is, while this is focused on school enrollment, I wonder if there was data that compares adult age groups, specifically those who do not have children? And if there is a macro analysis of the, out, analysis of those trends? This is important not only for our, our tax base to support our schools, but more importantly, how we take care of our community. With such small housing numbers, growth, are our kids in the community living in tighter conditions? Are our seniors living at greater rates than other similar communities, et cetera?
Brainer, I can uh-
I think, yeah, why don't you go ahead with your ACS data knowledge?
I'll start answering it and then I can kick it back to you. I, this question makes me think of the one graph that we showed um, that showed uh, the school age population is increasing as uh, as a percent of the total town population, which then of course uh, implies that the not school age population is decreasing. So I think that maybe gets to, you know, this report didn't quite look at all different age groups just because of the focus of the report. So I don't know if we have answers for you or um, you know, let's say like retirement age folks and, and uh, and, and kind of the trends happening there, but it, it certainly does show that um, the, the, the number of, the number of people in town who are at the age that they could be enrolled uh, in Winchester Public Schools is increasing, uh, becoming a larger kind of slice of the pie. Yeah, Brainer, I don't know if you have anything to add to that?
Oh, no, I, I don't, that's a good answer.
Brainer and Jacob, can I um, I, I'd like to bring up a question that came from the select board chair earlier today. And, and only to the, so you've had a chance to see it, I don't know if you, if you're even prepared to address yet, but the, this is a good one. Room, and this is referencing the report, uh, you touched on this tonight, remote work. Remote and hybrid work remains popular post-pandemic in fields common among Winchester workers and the region of the Boston suburbs to the west and the northwest of the city, including Winchester. These are the places in the Commonwealth where remote work is concentrated, I think that's figure five in the report. This could imply that future purchases of larger homes with more bedrooms may not translate to as many student-age children if one or two of those bedrooms are used as office space for working adults in the family. This is relevant to Winchester amid a trend of older, more modestly sized homes being torn down and replaced with the larger ones. I, I guess I'd put you on the spot and ask you to react to that, but I, I, I'd like to start and say, if we just reflect on the work that we already did in the twenty-seventeen master plan, I think it's table eight that we've resurrected in your current report. When we look at specific housing development, we assign zero students to a studio unit. I believe we assign point five students to a one-bedroom, um, one student to a two-bedroom, but we assign no more students to a four-bedroom than a three. We assign no, that, we assign the, the, the probability, if you will, of no more students in a five-bedroom to a four or a three. And we did that back in twenty-seventeen, acknowledging the trend that, that Ms. Pryor was just, just sort of describing that smaller homes coming down, build, building bigger homes, where this was before COVID. So whether it's a home office or a gym or what have you, we see a lot of these accessory bedrooms and there's no kids in them. So that was our approach then. It, it, would, would you concur that sort of the case today? And, and do you guys have sort of the, the researcher's perspective that might give a more sort of knowledgeable answer?
I'll just concur that, yeah, for the um, number of kids per bedroom. And Jacob, this is, yeah, you can chime in, but does not rise with, you know, arithmetically with the number of bedrooms. You know, so be, because it does assume that once you raise a certain point, you're not actually going to be adding more children. I think that probably more important, well, maybe than the number of bedrooms is what, you know, with the teardown like means. It, it means, it means churn. And like you were saying earlier, um, it could go from a three-bedroom teardown to two townhomes that now could have up to eight bedrooms. And so you have that with more bedrooms, one, and number two, you have churn. The um, the, the baby boomers who raised the kids there or the silent generation that raised their kids there have moved out and then the young from Camberville um, can move in. And that, you know, anecdotally, actually found out that a lot of people are moving actually into Arlington from Cambridge, Somerville. And I would imagine that's the same. So I think that um, yeah, we're conservative about the number of kids, depending on the size. And then I think you'd have to think about the churn and churn, it's a great time to get more schoolchildren.
So Jay, there, there's another question in the Q and A from a planning board member, I'll ask Andrew to read in a moment. I, I, just to put a pin though on this discussion, I also want to share with folks that, that, that projection model that we just described about zero kids for studios, half a child, one bedroom, et cetera, is an approach we took in twenty-seventeen and we actually applied that modeling to other housing projects that popped up after the twenty-seventeen master plan, that we had no idea were coming. River Street is a perfect example. So based on the actual design of River Street, the actual number of studios, the one beds, the two, two plus den, three, three plus den. We took that model and said, well, we think we're going to see approximately this many kids, plus or minus, you know, a very small percentage. And what's interesting is we, we wrote a memo to the MSBA in the fall of twenty-twenty. We said we would see between, I think we said tw- twenty-six and thirty kids at River Street at the elementary late, elementary age, because of course, we're focused on Lynch, so just K-five. We thought we'd see about that many kids um, and others for grade six through twelve. Interestingly, based on the current lease rate at River Street, we are going to be, we're actually going to be high for the number of elementary kids. But it looks like we're on target to have, you know, over forty elementary kids. We will have kids in grade six through twelve, but we're going to see more kids at, at the younger age. But the bottom line is when you add up K-five and six-twelve, we're sort of right down the middle of that projection model that we came up with in twenty-seventeen, which I think just gives us some confidence when we look at these larger developments, whether it's Waterfield or some of the larger developments off of Main Street. But Jay, uh, is it all right for Andrew to just kind of, I think, and Brian Vernalia had a question, if Andrew could share it with Rupa?
Right ahead.
Yes, Brian's question was if the loss of children during COVID was attributed to children transferring to private schools, do we factor in the return of those kids at some point along the way? For example, they left during elementary, a return for high school, are they being factored in now and in the future?
Um, I can, I can answer that, uh, we don't factor that in. Again, that might be kind of, read that as, you know, we wanted a more conservative estimate of, you know, for these future enrollment numbers. And um, and, and you know, and a projections based on assumptions. So if that's an assumption that, you know, maybe you start seeing in the data or anecdotally or whatever in the future, then, you know, kind of anticipate that and kind of, you know, and anticipate how that would affect the, the numbers we came up with.
So what I think I might suggest is just given the time, um, there's, I think, an old colleague of Brainer's has asked a question, John Sherbeer. I don't know if that name-
Oh, John.
John is with us this evening. John had, John has a, he has two questions. The first is how many school age children are currently living at Sanctuary West and North? I'm actually going to punt on that for the meeting tonight only because that information kind of gets updated periodically and, and, and maybe Andrew does have the latest numbers, uh, but that is something that um, administration tracks um, pretty closely. And if Andrew has those numbers, I just want to say, even though River, so River Street sits in the Lynch District. And of course, as we all know, we're building a new Lynch, so we're very limited on space at Parkhurst. The elementary kids at River Street are not all going to Parkhurst. Some of those kids have been reassigned to other schools where we have space available. That's not really a permanent solution, that's kind of a short-term, this is where we can fit you solution. So I just sort of wanted to say that for the record. But uh, Brainer, John asks, do rental units result in fewer school age children than ho- ownership housing? Our former superintendent always had a strong answer to that question, but I've not asked Frank Hackett what he thinks. So I wonder, what do you think?
I would like to hear his perspective on that. John, good to hear from you. And um, you have through ACS data, because we do have a lot of data about um, the characters, the characteristics of rental and we have characteristics of owner occupied. How granular that is, I'm, don't really want to speculate. Jacob, would you have any sense of that with the um, census data?
A great question and I wish I had an answer. I wish I had that at my fingertips. It's a great question and maybe we can look that up and send that to Chris, uh, if I can find an answer there. The, it is, it could be a little difficult to find because um, just, you know, you could think it's different for different communities, I would say. You look at a community like Cambridge and I'm sure the answer is going to be way different. Look at a community like Somerville. Somewhere like Winchester, um, we might need to dig a little bit, given the population thresholds and everything in the census. But yeah, I don't, I don't have anything definitive on that, so I don't, I don't particularly want to speculate.
Can, can I offer that our former superintendent always had a strong opinion that rental would always bring more kids um, than, than homeownership? I mean, that was her opinion and she had some, some past experience and anecdotal evidence to back that up. What I think is interesting maybe to share, John, is um, and, and I think Andrew maybe does have those numbers he can share with you in a moment. When Sanctuary North and West, I think as we all know, it's, it's, they're created by the same developers. So there is, let's say, a same sort of quality to, to design and amenities, right? They're in the same town, they happen to be in two different elementary districts, but other than that, they're really- They're really somewhat similar. The biggest difference between the two is that Sanctuary West is right on a state highway. If I were a parent of young kids, have kids today, still have a kid in the district, but if I had young kids. Sanctuary West would be sort of less appealing to me, not comfortable with a kid running out to play and a ball bouncing across, you know, Route three. That's very different at River Street where it does feel much more like a neighborhood. So anecdotally, I would just offer. It's River Street with that more neighborhood feel where we're seeing enrollment outpace what we had projected. But then conversely, out on Cambridge Street, where we do have kids, K through twelve that are moving in. That they're moving in at sort of a lower rate than what we projected. So I, beyond whether it's just sort of ownership or rental, I think it it's also very much influenced by specific site. And sort of character of the development. But Jay, I think Andrew maybe has those numbers. He, Andrew, did you have those to share?
Yeah, so as of now, we have fifty-one students resigning, residing at River Street and eleven at Cambridge Street.
And I'll I'll add to the one thing that we learned through this process, folks, was, and maybe this shouldn't be surprising. It it's the, it's the smaller, lower-cost units that get snapped up first. So all of the studios are spoken for, I believe all the one-bedrooms are spoken for. Many of the two bedrooms are spoken for, but there are a lot of two-bed dens left, there's three bedrooms, there's three-bedroom dens, so. And and. So one can, I think reasonably conclude that although those have a higher cost of entry. You know, those who actually sign on the dotted line, and I mean, certainly my opinion here, I'm not speaking for UMass. But I think, I think the larger the unit, the greater the probability that that those residents are going to have kids. So so to date, we're filling up River Street with kids a little faster than we had predicted. And those units that remain have arguably greater appeal for families with young kids. So I think that's something we're watching very carefully. Jay, I think, you know, we're we're a couple of minutes past our hard stop. If if it's all right with you, if we maybe just sort of wrap this up with some thanks and and maybe just a word about next steps?
Yes, please.
So, you know, several folks have been interested in what this means for things like the new Morocco. So now that we've got this report, do we know how big the new Morocco needs to be? We don't yet. I think this is a very important piece. But what dictates how big Morocco needs to be is is not just our thoughts and project, projections about enrollment growth. We'll need to go back and evaluate our school capacity for students, just like we did last time. We have some temporary classroom space. We may choose to take off the books because it will not be long for this world. And Winchester has, you know, taken up the conversation about redistricting in our last two elementary builds. That's not really been something, Tom, that the school committee has talked about explicitly around Lynch, although we've acknowledged we may have to talk about it someday. So when VO was built, we did a town-wide redistricting, it affected all five districts. When Ambrose opened up, we just moved the line between Lincoln and Ambrose a little bit. So what the committee and the administration will need to do is really evaluate school capacity. Look carefully, not just at the enrollment growth, but where these kids are actually living. And then I think once we get through that process, we'll have a better sense of whether Morocco should be a school for, you know, four hundred and twenty kids or four hundred and eighty kids. I, what I am heartened by Jay is having read this report. I don't have any confidence we need to build a new Morocco for seven hundred kids, so that's a good thing. That, you know, it it gives me a, you know, there's a threshold. But but these are all sort of questions for what we call phase two of the master plan when we start that architectural work. And I I just think, you know, Brainer and Jacob have done a great job giving us some good information to sort of move the football a little further.
Yes, I agree. Thank you.
So with that, I think for the school committee side of this, I thank Brainer and Jacob. This is foundational and very important work, and I think we can ask for a motion to adjourn at this point for the school committee.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
And I'll do a roll call vote. Ms. Bergstrom?
Hi.
Mr. Nixon?
Hi.
And the acting chair votes aye. It's actually, as Miss Bill says here, I do not see her. So I'm standing in for her tonight, but I vote aye. So we are adjourned as the school committee. Again, thank you very much. This is has been very, very helpful. Thanks.
Thank you. Have a great night.
Yep.
Motion to adjourn for the EF PBC?
So moved.
Second.
Brendan? And Frank?
Hi.
Lisa?
Yes.
Todd?
Yes, yes.
Geetha?
Yes.
John? Who's John? All right, Pauline?
Yes.
Mark? Mark, okay. Don?
Yes.
Good. We're adjourned. Thank you very much, everyone.
Okay, good night, everyone.
Good night.